I would like to bring the regular meeting of the Peters Township Planning Commission to order. Seth, can we have a roll call?
Yeah. Jeff Mills is not here this evening. Rockham Magrino is not here. Ted Carfels?
Here.
Dave Riley?
Here.
Conrad Selepus?
Here.
Michelle Corbal?
Here.
Aaron Smith is not here this evening.
You know, Doc, we have the minutes from the last regular meeting. Could I have any changes to those minutes or a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion. If there are no comments, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded to approve minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any reports and correspondence that we need to talk about, Seth?
No.
Any site plans or subdivisions that have been filed for review?
No.
Is the agenda still the same as we have in our docket?
No change.
Are there any audience comments that are not specific to one of our business items tonight? Hearing none and having no business, I will move on to new business with the first one being a recommendation for the mixed-use activity center and off-street parking and loading ordinance amendments.
This is a series of zoning ordinance amendments that are very similar to ordinance amendments that were reviewed by township or planning commission back at the March 10, 2022 meeting. There was a recommendation of approval to township council. That ordinance ultimately failed due to a provision in there that eliminated a restriction on 36 units per structure maximum for multifamily development in the mixed-use activity one sub-district. The ordinances amendments that we're looking at tonight specifically apply to two sections of the township zoning ordinance, the mixed-use activity district and our off-street parking and loading section. Within the mixed-use activity district, we're proposing to reduce the maximum floor area ratio, the FAR, from one to .85. This is a, you know, a dimensional requirement that limits the overall developmental potential of a piece of property depending on the size of the property. This is a direct reflection of a change that was made to the town center zoning ordinance back in 2020, the end of 21 or early 22. The second portion of amendments within the mixed-use activity district would be eliminating a maximum front yard setback for new developments along collector, connector, and artier road in that district. This would be Route 19, Bevout, East McMurray, Hidden Valley Road, Waterdam, Galley, Thompsonville, or Valley Brook Road. We would still be retaining the existing 20-foot minimum but eliminating the 25-foot maximum. We have found that this restriction kind of makes it very difficult to develop some pieces of property, especially ones that are larger in size when you have a maximum setback of high-traffic, high-busy corridors. And we have other provisions in the zoning ordinance that we think help us somewhat achieve the same goal and maintain good aesthetic character along these same corridors, but having this 25-foot maximum really is difficult for most properties. Lastly, we are proposing to eliminate an ordinance requirement that requires 50% of all parking spaces associated with multifamily developments across the township be covered on three sides. We have seen this been done on other projects in the township over the last couple decades and quite honestly, what ends up happening is these facilities become dilapidated, visually unsightly, they're not maintained well. So we don't think it's prudent for multifamily developments in the township to be required to have at minimum 50% of their parking spaces be covered on three sides. This isn't a change to any of their parking area requirements, the number of parking spaces required, just the amount of parking spaces that have to be covered. Those are our three proposed ordinance amendments. We have a public hearing scheduled for April 24, immediately followed by a regular council meeting where they may take action on this ordinance. This will be a recommendation from the planning commission to council tonight.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll just kickstart it by saying that I think, you know, all three make sense. We hit our workshop and we've talked about this before, that 25-foot maximum did seem kind of peculiar and that covering the parking spaces just adds to clutter more than anything, I think, in some instances, not everyone. And the floor area ratio, that's being reduced to .85. Could you explain that a little bit more detail to those of us?
Yeah. So, the way FAR works is, let's say you have a 10,000-square-foot piece of property. If the FAR for that zoning district is one, that means you get a total of 10,000 square feet of building area. Two stories, three stories, four stories, whatever that ends up being, your total building area is 10,000 square feet. At .85, it's 8,500. It's less building mass on a piece of property. That's, as opposed to like a lot coverage example per se, FAR is another way of approaching restricting the amount of building area or building size on a piece of property.
So that's not the footprint, that's the sum of the total?
Yeah, sum is a great word.
Seth, has there been any opposition to any of these, any negative comments, anything from the community at all where people aren't in favor of this that you've heard of?
Not on any of these three proposed changes. There was some pushback on that previous ordinance amendment which eliminated that maximum number of units per structure. Obviously, that's been repealed as part of this proposal. We have not had any negative reaction to this proposed ordinance.
So the maximum height and number of stories, is it another restriction that stays the same? I mean, that's unchanged and it works on itself?
Not being changed. Right, right. In the mixed-use activity district, it's three stories by right, four stories conditional use.
There's a 50-foot height or something?
Yeah, right, right. Depends on pitched or flat, but that FAR that really restricts how big that building can be.
Now, does there need to be a public hearing on this?
April 24 is our public hearing in front of council.
What was the reasoning for the 25-foot maximum in the past?
That's a good question. You know, there's planning theory out there about activating street corridors by pulling buildings closer to them. It helps maintain maybe more pedestrian friendly if you've got sidewalks. By pulling buildings closer to the street, you're pushing parking behind buildings so you're not looking at parking lots along the corridors. I do think there is some value in that theory and planning in regards to that. And like I said, we have other provisions that I think help us achieve a similar goal, but doing it along these major corridors with having tight setbacks does prove challenging.
I would assume it makes it feel congested.
It makes it feel congested and it makes it, especially like Route 19, when you've got a lot of fast-moving busy traffic, having buildings that close can be difficult.
Right.
I think when you talked about it before, it had a traffic calming.
It does have a traffic calming. That's an element of it as well. But again, on Route 19, you can really only do so much with building mass to help calm traffic. You've really just got lots of traffic.
I think that attempt might have left the, maybe passed that at this point.
I have one more question. Seth, if you have, if the lower level is like all park and garage, that's not counted, and how are stories counted? Does that have anything, how is that?
So, parking garages, I have to go back and look at our ordinance, but if it's, you know, if it's part of a multi-use structure, I do believe parking would be considered part of your FAR. Standalone parking garages, I don't believe are, but I don't have that in front of me right now. The way we calculate stories, it depends on how much is exposed out of ground. If more than 50% of a building story is exposed, then it counts as a story. So if you did underground parking, it's not going to hurt you in terms of your maximum number of building stories.
Okay. Any audience comments on this particular topic?
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the April 6, 2023 planning recommendations with respect to the mixed-use activity and off-street parking and loading ordinance amendments.
Okay, we have a motion seconded. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Second item is also a recommendation on the Camden Village condominium plan at 150 Quail Run Road.
Back at the August 25, 2022 planning commission, we reviewed the Camden Village development plan. Ultimately, there was a recommendation of approval by the planning commission to township council, subject to a total of 18 conditions. The plan in engineering and design essence has not changed. What has changed from what was previously seen was instead of developing the project as townhouses, these are now condos. Now, in terms of what you would see from Quail Run Road or from Sugar Camp, that's not changing. Going from a townhouse to a condo plan really just means how these plans will be ultimately subdivided and sold. Instead of purchasing land around the unit, you'd only be purchasing the walls of the unit, exterior, interior, depending on how the documents work. And then the remainder of the space around the development, including the shared driveway, stormwater management, and the open space around the units would be commonly owned and maintained by the future HOA of this little townhouse development. Like I mentioned, nothing has changed in terms of stormwater management, sanitary sewers. Technically, our open space has increased just because of how these properties are being subdivided now, but visually that has not changed. The geotech for the property has been reviewed and approved by the township engineer. The proposed townhouses have not changed. The landscaping plan has not changed. Nothing really functionally that you would see out there has changed since planning commission last saw this last year. So with that being said, planning staff is making a recommendation that the Camden Village preliminary final plan for condominiums be approved, subject to the 14 conditions listed in my April 5, 2023 report. The reason that those number of conditions has reduced is because many of the 18 that have been, I guess, four of the 18 from last approval have been addressed at this point as we are continuing to work through the development process. So, and there are some, I left on there that I marked as complete just so you could understand how many things have been addressed since planning commission last saw this.
Seth, I have a question. I'm confused by one thing, and it says in this, that these, the units, because of the topography, the ones along Quail Run will be, it says rear-facing sidewalk, front rear-entry style. What does that mean?
So, it's okay. These units here, Ted, there will be sidewalks along the front. They will have doors that have access to the sidewalks, but the garage and the vehicular entrance to the units will be off the back along this private driveway. So if you're driving on Quail Run, you won't see driveways for these four units because they're located on the back.
Okay. Will that sidewalk have to be shown or is that a?
It's on the construction drawings. It may be hard to read here on the, on this landscape plan, but it's part of the construction drawings.
Seth, this is one that there were substantial discussions regarding the entry and that it being close to the, right?
Entrance has not changed. Our township traffic engineer still maintains the position that that's the ideal location for entering and exiting this development.
And what's the driveway depth?
I can't hear. We're talking so softly.
Okay, I'll speak up. Thank you. Ted, what was your question?
What's the length of that driveway?
The length of the cul-de-sac. The applicant's designer is here. I'll lean on him because I don't have that dimension in front of me. Maybe 90 feet, Ted?
No, no, no. The driveways, the individual.
Oh, these driveways. We were able to obtain at least 25 feet from the rear of the driveway to those units.
Did that increase? It's our last meeting?
Yes, yes, it did. I remember that was the point of contention. We increased that, yes.
That we were talking about.
Yes. That is reflected on what you're seeing here.
Thank you. And I'm not sure if our mics are even on, so.
The switch is on. I don't know if they are working.
Hello? Can you hear? Seth? I think we should move him closer.
I'll get real close.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Do we want the applicant representative to come up and answer any questions for us?
Do you have any comments?
I'm David Lucci.
Come on up first and take the mic and sign in.
Yep. My name's David Lucci. I'm from Victor Wetzel Associates, and we are the land planners and landscape architects for this. And yeah, if you have any questions we can answer. I think Seth did a great job, so if you have any questions, I can, you know, I can see if I can answer.
So just what Seth said, nothing really changed other than, the open space didn't change either. That's all the same, correct?
It's just actually like, no, it stayed the same. It's just now that we're all condo, the open space has increased because there's no lot lines per se. So most of the area that you see in green is the open space, other than the detention facility, you know, that's always taken out. But I think Seth has in his report about like 1.6 acres is open space. When you take out the detention facility, it's 1.08 acres of open space. So half, half the site is open space.
Any idea if this project gets approved, when it might get started?
We would like to start as soon as we can. I know we're chasing an NPDS permit for this, so I believe we would like to start as soon as we can get approval and get our permits.
You guys have any questions? Could I at this time ask if any audience has any questions or concerns, comments? Please come on up and sign in and state your name and where you're from.
My name's Bob Ralston. I'm the property manager for Quail Run Condominium Association. I'm also a owner in the community as well and a longtime resident of Peters Township. And just let me sign in here.
Bob, what was your last name again?
It's Ralston, R-A-L-S-T-O-N.
I believe you spoke last time, right?
We did, yes, yes.
Yes.
So, and I appreciate the opportunity. Again, I spoke at the August meeting as well. We had a couple of concerns, and I know Seth mentioned that there's 14 conditions. I'm not familiar with what the conditions are, so maybe a lot of the, the couple of things I have on here might already be included in there. But one of our concerns is on Quail Run Road, we brought this up in August, on Quail Run Road, there's a crest curve that comes down. It's on the top of the sheet there, come over the hill. We petitioned township back in 2012, 2013 to put no parking over that crest curve going to the north because there's a lot of traffic coming through there. And when people used to park there, it was, it was dicey. There was a lot of close calls and such. So now we're asking with this development, since there's going to be units with, particularly the building on the east side with the sidewalks coming out, there's going to be a tendency for people to park there and access the unit. And we're asking for the township to put in no parking, no standing, no along there so that we don't end up with a lot of, with people parking along there and then only one lane's open and people are working their way around that. And one of the things with Quail Run Road is with all the new developments going in on Sugar Camp Road, this is the only road to get over to Bethel Park, Irish Town Road over in that direction. So we already see a good bit of traffic coming through here that doesn't go to Quail Run. And our anticipation is we're only going to see more after these developments are done. So we're just asking that the township put no parking restriction through there.
I think, didn't we address that last time? Didn't that come up?
We talked about it.
Yeah.
And I talked about it internally with administration because that's a township matter. We have no concerns about doing that. We talked about it. I think our thought was we would just time that up with the development. Not necessarily go out and do it right now, but as we get closer to the development actually starting and during construction, we can address that no parking issue.
So that doesn't have to be a condition that we make?
Because it's a designation that has to be made on the township side. Yes.
So the plan is to go ahead and do that?
If I recall correctly, when we were talking back in August, I think because of the proximity to the swimming pool, which is right.
I'm sorry, about the swimming pool?
It's right on Sandpiper, isn't it?
Our swimming pool is on Sandpiper. That's another concern that we.
To cross the street.
The overflow of parking sometimes bleeds out onto Quail.
We don't know. Usually when people park for the pool, if we have overflow parking, it's more up in the Sandpiper. We don't, typically very few people, I don't think anybody's ever really parked down on Quail Run because it's so busy. It's not, it's not a place many people want to, want to park or be because of how, even when people walk, they're hesitant when they get down into that area because of how much traffic's coming through and how fast it's moving.
I thought the concern last time was that the people with these condos here would park in those, in the swimming pool, designated parking areas. I thought that was the issue.
That's another point we were going to bring up, that we were, and I'm glad to hear that driveway is now going to be 20 feet because that assures that there can be enough parking in the driveways so that, you know, at least the everyday parking isn't going to spill over. We still are concerned, and I brought this up, and it is that the six spaces that are provided for public parking, not in the driveways, but there's three spaces right where the driveway entrance is and three spaces up in the cul-de-sac, that those always be maintained for parking. You know, that it doesn't turn into a place where it's stockpile mulch or park boats or something, or even when people are living in the community. I know we've had a few people in ours, they bring a car in, the inspections expire, the car, they just park it there, that these are actually used for. And our concern is, is that if those are not maintained, then people are going to start parking in our pool parking lot, which is right off the, if you, if the front circle's there, it's right off the east side of that picture there. We're right, right across the street from this new development.
I recall us talking about that as well last time, didn't we? What was the resolution there?
I have no concerns about those. We will require that they be maintained as public parking spaces. I don't expect those to ever go away. You know, there may be a situation where someone parking a boat there, that's just a matter for us to address. I don't think there's anything we can do right now to prohibit that. That's more of an activity thing, but we would address that at the time. But the intention going into this is to have those maintained in perpetuity as parking spaces.
Right. I guess my question would be that if this is going to be a condo, there's going to be condo association documents, why can we not put that as a condition that the spots have to be maintained and that it say in the condo association documents that everybody signs who buys something there, that they're not permitted to park along Quail Run? I mean, if, do you know what I mean? I understand what you're saying, but if you make it as part of the condo association requirements that everybody's going to have to sign, you know, then at least you know that it's not, I just don't know how we ensure that we've addressed these issues if we don't put them in as a condition.
Well, parking on Quail Run, that's township road. We would say no parking there. We just post that for no parking.
I understand. I get that. But again, when it's then, it would also be a violation. If we put the, but parking there will be a violation of the condo. I mean, condo associations say everything. It says how high you can, your grass can be. So I don't know why we couldn't add a requirement that it be included in there, that there shall be no parking along Quail Run Road.
The cul-de-sac.
Only, I mean, the only concern I have about that really is we can't enforce condo documents. That's the, that's the only thing.
But the condo association can, and it gives them the teeth to do so if they need to do so because it's part of their document process.
It's separate and distinct from?
They will be, yes, yes.
So Seth, being that that's a private drive coming in that cul-de-sac, right? So that will be maintained by like snow removal by other than township forces, correct?
We're going to make it very clear on the final plan for recording that that is a private driveway, that is to be maintained as such by the HOA in perpetuity, will not be accepted by the township, will not be considered for acceptance by the township. It will retain in possession of the Quail Run, Camden Village HOA.
Yeah.
And the fact that that it's a condo is that the only person, the only thing that the owner of each unit is buying is the building itself. So all the grounds, so that gives the HOA more control over the parking spaces and the roads and all that stuff.
Yes. Yep. Those parking spaces will be sitting in property owned by the HOA.
Right. So in summary, just for my benefit, this is a different HOA from the one that you manage.
Correct, yes.
And so they'll, they'll have to control themselves or they'll have some internal problems.
I'm sure they will. I'm sure they have to.
I mean, they have to, but as far as when, when somebody buys into that condo association, you don't even buy the unit, they, they have to buy within that condo association and then they sign documents that say what, you know, you're allowed to have a, you're allowed to have a clothesline. You're not allowed to have a clothesline. You're allowed to have pink flowers. You can only have blue flowers. I mean, condo association and other associations have been, are, sometimes are that restrictive. So, this is my experience. If you make those part of these, something that has to go into the condo association documents, it then gives that condo association a little more teeth and it gives the township also something to say like you're violating your own, your own documents. So that's just why that if these are concerns and you make that part of the covenants, that these two items have to be part of. That is that the six additional parking spaces be maintained as such and for no other purpose than temporary or visitor parking, and two, that no, no owner of any unit, you know, shall park along, along Quail Run for any reason, then the developer, they have to put that in that, in there. And then, and then it's just there and it doesn't get forgotten about.
Have you added that as number 15, Seth?
I'm.
Oh, he hasn't. He hasn't been told to do so.
It's there if we put it in.
Well, there's a condition number 10 that says HOA documents shall be adopted that include all facilities, blah, blah, blah. And you can either add to that condition number 10 about the HOA or add a condition 15, I guess. I would state that those parking spaces, whatever.
So I think I interrupted you though, so I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I think I interrupted you when you were talking about your concerns.
Appreciate everything you're saying. It's, it really addresses our concern. I think the one thing that we would ask though is that, and kind of what Seth was saying, the parking along Sugar Run Road is the township's, and I know this, my experience is, is that anything that happens on Quail Run Road is not our, we don't have any teeth with that. If anybody parks in our private driveways, we have all the teeth on that. So if that no parking restriction could be from the township, that would be greatly appreciated.
I think it has to be.
The parking spaces would be the association's responsibility.
Right.
Okay. And then just, I had one other, one other concern here, and it was brought up in August too, is that there's a landscaping plan that is part of this development, especially on the north side. Our first building is very close to that northern property line. And so we just want assurances that what's shown on the plan is what's going to be done. And I'm talking to Seth earlier, that we have that assurance that that's going to happen because there's going to be, it's going to be pretty tight there the way those are.
You mean for a buffer?
A buffer, yeah, of some kind.
How detailed is the landscaping plan, Seth?
It's very detailed. The benefit of working with Victor Wetzel and Associates is they have landscape architects on staff and put together landscape plans. They're stamped by landscape architects. Typically, they pick very good plantings, planting choices, locations, density, layout. It's all usually very well done.
Yep. Another one. Okay.
So that's, that addresses our specific concerns pertaining to that. So, and I appreciate the planning commission. I know there were some concerns that were brought up in August too about the general regulations for townhomes and developments and how tight these developments are. And I know that's, you know, has to do with the regulations and the laws in the township. We would just, I'm speaking, I think, more for myself than the manager, but I can also say our council shares the same concerns is, is that if there's any way that those, those standards could be loosened up a little bit so that these developments aren't so tight, it would just really be appreciated. But that's beyond, that's beyond this. I understand that, Seth.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else in the audience would like to make a comment on this item?
So, I know there's an audience comment, but just so that nobody is surprised, I might, from my recollection, if I'm recalling this correctly, I had had some concerns and objections to the, to where the entrance of this was. Last time we met, I still share those, I still, I still have those concerns. I don't like where the entrance and exit is. I get that traffic has looked at this and that it's the, for the spot, it's the best location that there is, but I still don't like it. I think it's far, far, far too close to the, to the circle where people are coming in and out. Coming out maybe to the, making a right, not so bad, but as soon as you get around that circle and having to make the left in there, I just, I don't like it. So, I just want to renew, those were my concerns last time because that'll explain where I'm headed.
I do remember that conversation. Mike Muntry was here that night, I think, too, wasn't he?
Yeah. And if I recall correctly, it was, there's only a little piece of land here. There's only too many spots and there is that, that hill that comes over and there's a site distance issue. But I believe my comment back then was is it doesn't, it just makes the other place less of an issue, the other location, but to me, it's still an issue. So I just want to put that out there because that'll explain where we go with the vote.
I think one of the things that I noticed is it looks like that entrance is more flared than it was before. It looks a little bit wider, like they made it wider. I mean, I'm not sure, but that's what it appears like to me.
Yeah, I see that. You're right. I just, it's too close to me.
No, I get that.
It's too close to where everything's happening. Along a busy road at this point.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot going on with the other, the sand pipe that comes in right past that. There's a lot of things happening.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's a nice development. I think that, I think there'll be nice condos. I think it'll be very, very nice. I think it'll be nicer maybe than some of the condos that are there now. I just think that it's, it's an unfortunate piece of property. I mean, I used to own a condo there. I know how much housing there is there, how many people that are there. I know the going in and out of there. And I think that between the number of people who are now going up Sugar Camp and then the stoppage to have to turn a left or make a right, and with all the other development up there, I don't think this road is made for it. And I think that when you have people trying to pull in and if they have to stop and wait to go down and make the left in order to get in there or to make a left to get out, I think it's, I think it's a concern. And then you take especially that this is a walking. And then you take especially that this is a walking neighborhood. Kids do walk through here, people walk through here. The pool is right down by there. In the summer, there's a lot of people walking around and so I'm just, I just wanted to put it out there so that, this is my concerns last time. And there's nothing, and I, I get that, that it passed last time as well, but I just wanted to make my concerns again, just put them on the record.
We do need the, the site distance for this end.
No, I know it needs the site distance, yep.
We have the entrance and I think the township, uh, traffic, you know, agreed upon where we could put this out the most logical place for, for this piece of property. And, you know, we've tried to widen it as much as we can to, to make sure that, you know, you can have a good site distance. And what we, we're showing that there might be a possible, that we might have to remove some of those trees to get better site distance as well. So that's shown on the landscape plan.
Yep.
Okay. Really? I don't have anything else. Anything else? Rochelle, anything else?
No, that's all I have. I just wanted to make that clear.
All right. Having no more comments from the commission or the audience, may I entertain an active action motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion that the planning commission recommend approval for the Camden Village condominium's preliminary plan as outlined in the memo dated April 5th. And I would like to add a condition that the, for the HOA to control the parking, you know, to confirm that the parking will be for guests and not for residents and no standing parking allowed there, no storage.
Do you really want to say no guests or?
For guests, not for, not for guests and not for residents to be used as additional parking spaces.
Okay.
Something like that.
We have a motion and we have 15 conditions and we have a second to that.
A second motion?
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
No.
And the motion passes three to one. The next item is a recommendation, the Macrina subdivision located on Bebout Road. And I understand, Rochelle, you're going to recuse yourself from this?
I am, simply because I live across the street.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And Seth, you want to present?
I'm actually going to hand it over to the new assistant planning director, Mr. Jim Sutter, who's taken over my position, and he's going to help us out here on the Macrina subdivision.
Okay, welcome, Jim, and go ahead and present if you would.
All right. Well, the township recently received an application for subdivision from John Suzanne Macrinos and the property, you can see it there on Bebout Road. This is a, you saw a draft plan of this back late last year when they came through to attain a modification. They had to attain a modification to, from the provision 385, 36B, 3B of the code that prevents newly created lots or parcels to have direct driveway access to arterials or collectors. The goal of this subdivision is to basically just split a 10 acre parcel into two five acre lots so that a new structure can be constructed on the southern lot, as you can see there in blue. Both lots are in conformance with the provisions of the zoning code. There were concerns over the recording of the easement and having a shared maintenance agreement between the new property and the existing properties executed as well and presented to township before any approvals. We are recommending approval of the subdivisions contingent on the six conditions listed there as well as two additional conditions Seth and I realize are required before two. We need the access easement recorded and provided to township prior to the issuance of a building permit for the house on the blue lot. That's lot 2B on the subdivision plan. And a note should be placed on the subdivision as well that the traffic impact fee of $1,750 be paid at the time of building permit issuance.
Could you maybe explain the shared driveway, how that will work on this plan we're seeing? So when, the new house is going to be built on the blue portion?
Yes. So the current, this is, the existing houses are located here. The existing driveway goes up here. There's going to be an easement recorded here at the sale of the new property. And we, it was desired to have a condition on the plan be that an easement, that shared maintenance agreement be recorded in perpetuity between the, this property, which is what referred to as lot one. It's not technically part of the subdivision, but it's part of the shared access there and the two new parcels as well.
So the home that's going to be constructed on the blue?
Yes.
Lot will not have a driveway access to Bebout?
It will have a driveway access to the existing driveway, which also have, which does have access to Bebout.
Okay. So we're not creating any additional access to Bebout, they'll share the current access to Bebout?
Yes.
Isn't there a stream that runs through close to Bebout?
There is. It's on.
It's in front of the houses.
Coming from the lakes, which would be to our right.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a squiggly, wavy river.
Okay. So as long as it stays in the family, there'll be no?
I believe the concern over having the agreement recorded was the assumption that down the road, that it's not always going to be in the family. That's why they want, that's why the, it was desired to have the agreement recorded in perpetuity.
Okay. And that's done?
That's standard, yes.
Yeah. Normal.
Yes.
So in addition to the six recommendations you have listed on the memo, there were two more that you just read.
Yes.
So essentially, there's eight.
There's eight right now.
I don't have any questions. You neither do I. Rochelle, do you have any thoughts?
No, since.
Well, that's right.
What's the topography like on this easement? You know, it's going, it starts further away and then it's kind of paralleling the stream. Is that because it follows a kind of a ladder topography towards the, so that you're not climbing a steep hill or anything like that?
This is the low side of Bebout Road where these properties.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm looking at the diagonal on the, on that blue, if you look back there, that easement is the dash line that's, that's kind of parallel to the stream sort of, right?
I'm not really interested. Hold on, hold on. Is that an easement? That's not.
Is that the easement there?
No, that's not the driveway.
No, the driveway easement is, is on the red.
Yeah, Ted, this is our driveway easement right here.
Yeah.
Yep.
Right.
That's a sanitary series.
This is sanitary here.
Yeah, I'm saying the easement is paralleling the stream in the red. See it, how it's paralleling the stream?
It dives away from the houses, but Anthony can speak to that.
Yeah, my name's Anthony Macrinos. I will be getting the, the second lot, the blue lot from my dad. He's the one that's subdividing for me. The access off of his driveway starts out as a small hill down because they had to raise it up from the creek bed. And then once it hits probably maybe 25 feet, it'll hit down and it's completely in like the flat area at the bottom of the creek. The, right now, that easement for the driveway is kind of a guesstimate because we don't have a exact measurement on there. It's something that once the driveway's put in, it's going to be rerecorded on the deed so that we have the exact easement set, the width, stuff like that.
You're going to be moving some earth.
Uh, not so much there. It's down there and we, we're going to be adding actually a lot more, so, just to get that hill to slowly go down. But basically, we're just kind of hugging the creek bed 50 foot back from the flood plain and it just goes straight across the flat ground and then it'll come up to our hill, to our house. The second house we sit on was the exact same elevation as my dad's house on the left and the right off of the.
So the driveway would go back up towards that?
Yeah, it'll come across horizontal and then it'll go back up.
So my other, my other concern was that you're not going to be fearing of flooding that driveway once it's in.
No.
Due to its proximity to the stream.
Yeah, we have, we're back from the 100-year flood, probably a couple feet, but it's also going to be an elevated driveway, probably like a foot or two off the ground, just to give us that extra assurance that we're not going to have to get flooded in.
Yeah, okay.
And if you guys have any other questions about it too, for free.
I think there's only one, at least since we've lived across the street from you guys, there's one time where it even, where it even came. I mean, there was one really bad one years ago.
It was that one really bad flood.
10, 15 years ago.
Yeah.
And that's the only one I've ever even, where you could see, because my kids used to get the bus on the opposite side and we would go and stand over the, stand on the little bridge area.
Yeah, that was probably Ivan in 2004, I think.
Yeah, it was, I just remember that was the only one that.
That's always the benchmark of, did it flood during Ivan? If not?
And if not, yeah.
I got a picture from my parents when it happened.
I think we have, we have them as well, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Are there any comments or questions from the audience? Not having heard any, do you guys want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that the, we, the Macrina subdivision is outlined in planning commission staff's memo dated April 6, 2023, be approved along with the eight conditions and recommendations outlined in staff's memo.
Do you have a second?
I'll say.
Motion made and seconded. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And that passes three to zero. Last item on our agenda is a recommendation for 1022 to 2023, I guess that's the name, Cannonsburg AL group living facility type B special exception. This is a recommendation to the zoning hearing board and it's located at 265 East McMurray Road.
The township planning department has been working with the applicant here on case 1022 2023, Cannonsburg AL is part of a special exception application for a group living facility type B in our mixed use activity zone, or sorry, in our mixed residential overlay over low density residential development with the MRO overlay on top. It's a special exception use in that zoning district. As part of the township's special exception approval process, the planning commission has provided an opportunity to make a recommendation to the zoning hearing board with the ultimate decision on the special exception use itself to be made by the township zoning hearing board. This is about 16 acre piece of property that is to be subdivided into an approximately eight acre parcel of land that would be developed as part of this proposed special exception project. It includes a three-story, just under 100,000 square foot senior living facility with approximately 130 units. I think they're still working through the logistics of exactly the number of units in the facility, but somewhere in the vicinity of 130 units. We would have much finer numbers on that if the special exception is approved and we come back to planning commission for site plan approval. They have provided the township with a traffic impact analysis that has been reviewed and commented on by the township traffic engineer, a couple little minor notations and, you know, report consistency things that need to be worked through, but at a high level view, no turn warrant mets or, turn warrants are met on East McMurray, which means this unit doesn't trigger any traffic improvements on East McMurray Road. The township has requested and it has been incorporated into their conceptual site plan that the primary ingress and egress for the development be constructed a township public right-of-way, public road within a 50-foot right-of-way, our standard 24-foot cartway, ultimately would be dedicated to the township as a public road that terminates in a temporary cul-de-sac to potentially facilitate development to the adjacent property. Should it ever be developed, the opportunity is there for a connection. It doesn't have any other frontage as part of this subdivision on any other public right-of-ways, so we're not proposing any other connections at this time. Previously, years ago, this property was looked at. It was stretched all the way over to Crest and Marion and Pleasant, but there were no proposed connections at this time. As part of their proposed site plan, they have given us some conceptual landscape plans that show us how they will be doing landscaping throughout the site. They've also provided us with some conceptual building elevations, including materials and colors to give us an idea of what this facility may look like. In addition to, you know, the criteria that we look at for special exception, which I provided in my staff report to you, there are also a number of criteria that would apply to this use in particular as a group living facility type B. These are our supplemental regulations, really things that we look at later down the road as part of site plan approval, but I think it's important to look at them in the context of this conversation tonight. And they would be kind of long things, long-term things that would apply to this development should it ever come to fruition. Your staff has worked closely with the applicant. We've been back and forth with him on a, kind of a number of different renditions to this conceptual site plan and their special exception application and narrative. At this time, we've comfortable making, providing an opinion to the zoning hearing board next Tuesday night, April 18th, that the special exception be approved, subject to a total of 13 conditions as provided for in my April 5, 2022 staff report to the planning commission. There's one, or one or two in there that I want to highlight for tonight's conversations. As part of that public road, we would be making a recommendation on a condition to the zoning hearing board that no retaining walls as part of this development be located with any township right-of-ways. We have some concerns about the long-term effects of those being within township right-of-ways. We've been discussing that with the applicant and I think there may be a path forward on that, but there's potentially, you know, some logistics on that that need to be worked out later down the road. In addition to that, you know, we like the building materials that we've seen. We want those incorporated into the ultimate final site plan. They are also proposing a connection down into the rear parking lot of Fire Station One. Would not necessarily be a full-time public connection, but it would be available for emergency access as needed. Our fire department is very much in support of that and would be a great thing should we need to.
Would it be gated?
Something along those lines, Conrad. We've not worked out the finer details of what that would be, but that's the idea is that it's only used on an as-needed emergency basis.
Some fake bushes or something.
Something like that. But staff is making a, will be providing the zoning hearing board an opinion for approval subject to those 13 conditions. I'm happy to answer any questions that the planning commission has. We have a presentation from the applicant and their representative tonight as well.
Okay. So I have a couple quick, go ahead, if you're going to do your.
Yeah. You can answer them.
Yeah.
Yeah, can you introduce yourself and go ahead and sign in, please?
Yes. So I'm Logan Puckett. I'm a development coordinator with Smith Packet.
Hey, Logan.
Behind me, I have Lynn Bishop, senior vice president, as well as Dante Seletti, the civil engineer with Morris Knowles and Associates.
Do you need the pointer and the clicker?
Thanks.
You're welcome. It's pretty straightforward.
Is it right?
Yep.
So here's the, the agenda. I just want to go over a few things relating to the history of Smith Packet, who we are and what we do and so forth before I defer to Mr. Seletti to talk about some of the more technical aspects of our project. Is that where the introductions? Smith Packet was founded in 1982. We're a seasoned senior living developer. Forty-five communities in operation, including independent living, assisted living and memory care. We have offices in, run in Virginia and Charleston. We started and by Jim and Augustine Smith. So the majority of our communities are managed and operated by Harmony Senior Services. As I already said, we have 45 communities that are predominantly run by Harmony and we have another 10 under construction and then 14 in development. And our footprint spans east of the Mississippi throughout the Atlantic region. So just talking a little bit about our, our market analysis and how we pinpointed Peter's Township. We have a team of market analysts that go through census tracts and demographics based on age, household income and so forth throughout the, throughout the area, starting at, within the five-mile range out to 25 miles, and we identified Peter's Township as in need for an assisted living and memory care community. We generally do an independent living, assisted living, memory care building, which is about twice the size of what we are proposing in Peter's Township, and, but due to those reasons, we are, we're at this time proposing assisted living and memory care. So as far as operations is concerned, we have 24/7 nursing staff, many community activities throughout the week. We operate our employees on off-peak hours, so we don't contribute to the typical nine-to-five traffic. Our projects span between 45 and 55 million, which would be a significant tax contribution to the community. Another reason why our communities are good for the community is the fact that they do not, they do not drive, the majority of our residents, especially considering that it's assisted living and memory care, they do not have a license, or they, you know, it's very few, it's usually a handful if at all, and generally by the time that they are, you know, acquainted and living at the communities, we provide a shuttle to doctor's appointments, shopping, entertainment venues, grocery stores, every, you know, everything that's needed in their daily lives is provided via the shuttle. So one thing that makes our communities unique is the fact that, you know, I really want to emphasize the, the community aspect of that. A third of our buildings are common area space, and, you know, I listed a number of the amenities that we provide, and it's not limited to a pub, bistro, game room, card room, hospitality room, fitness center, club rooms, library, and, you know, all of these spaces are used. We also have a, usually an in-house physical therapist that will, you know, provide physical therapy needs, you know, weekly. These are a couple of slides regarding previous communities that we've done of a comparable size. I don't think it's. Couple more pictures throughout our. And then here's a few of the amenities, a couple of slides on the amenities that we offer. Here's three residents about to have lunch in the dining room. We also have a theater. Beauty salon that we will actually have a hairstylist come in, usually once or twice a week, depending on the demand, and they'll actually do, you know, in-house haircuts, colorings. You know, because a lot of the residents take great pride in their hair. Billiards room and pub. Library. The physical therapy room. At this time, I'll turn it over to Dante. Sign in real quick.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dante Seletti. I'm with Morris Knowles and Associates, and we did a lot of the, the site plan investigations for this and worked very closely with Seth's developer to get to this point. I'll just give you some of the highlights. I'll reference my cheat sheet here so I stay on point. So the project's about 600 feet west of the fire department. You can, let's see here, there's a fire property right there. Like Seth had mentioned, the whole property's a little over 16 acres. This project is going to use a little over eight. No development for this project's going to take place over here. It's all going to be on this side here. Let's see here. So the proposed use is assisted living, memory care facility, so it's a special exception. Proposed footprint's about 34,000 square feet, which I should probably flip. There we go. So highlighting in pink, that's the overall footprint of the building. Kind of hard to see on that PDF, but the parking's in the front, on the, on the rear in Long City area here. Seth mentioned the possible connection to the fire department property over there. So to get to this point, there's been several site investigations. Like I said, we work closely with Seth. There's a lot of coordination with the township. So the planning iterations were mainly driven by township coordinates initially. This was proposed with just a private road going up to a dead end at the end of the facility over here. After some discussions with Seth, it was determined that they wanted, the township wants this to be a public road, and the developer wants to be a good neighbor, so they accepted the township road with the, with the required right-of-way going around the building and terminating in the post-cul-de-sac close to the edge of the property there. One of the difficulties with this site is there is a considerable amount of grade change from the axis on East McMurray to the finished floor of the building. Looking at about 62 feet of elevation change from the road to where the finished floor is. So that's the reason you see the road doing this long serpentine around the property. We had to do anything we could to make up grades and still stay within the confines of the township road requirements.
What is the maximum grade there?
It is 12% up to about right here, and then it levels off to, I want to say between six and seven after that point, maybe between five and seven.
Will the building be visible from McMurray Road?
It should be visible. There's, there are some retaining walls here. This is on the, the fill side of it, so the building will be above these retaining walls over here. I mean, there's going to be some proposed landscaping around it, but nothing that's going to screen it from the road.
Is that road grade, is that within our, our ordinance specs?
Yes, yes. 12 is the max, correct?
12 is the max.
So we, yeah, we designed this to, to the max spec, but.
So there's cut slopes around that. What are they pitched at?
These are all two-to-one side slopes on the side here, but there's no retaining walls. They're two-to-one side slopes.
Will the spoils have to be taken off-site or able to use them on-site?
This is a very heavy cut site.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, it's about 60,000 to 65,000 cubic yards of.
Will that have to be removed?
Yes.
I hope somebody has a quarry that needs filling.
Yeah, I mean, the elevation up around this cul-de-sac here is around 1,100 feet, I believe it is, and the axis down here is around 1,000, so I mean, we are literally cutting the top off of the hill to get the development up there. Let's see, what's a couple of other things. Seth already had talked about the traffic study. Oh, not shown on this particular slide, or in this, sorry, in this PowerPoint, because it was not ready in time. We did some additional investigations per the recommendations that Seth had, so I was going to pass these out to you if that's okay.
Do you have that camera working or not?
I was telling Jim before the meeting, we have not used that in five years, and I don't know where the remote is to turn it on.
I brought 15 copies, Seth.
Like I said, passing.
That's a lot.
I'm sure any people be here, so.
Guess not, Seth. These are sound pretty good.
They're killing. First hand job.
Jeez, Louise.
All right, that's project's next.
Thank you, Dante. Give one to Jim, too.
There will be an email tomorrow to repair that.
Can I have your copy, sir?
Yeah. Dr. Zohalski copy.
I have a mine in Midland, right?
So on this layout plan here, this shows an item that I wanted to bring up from Seth's recommendations here, from the planning staff recommendation, particularly item number three, about the proposed township road having a 50-foot right-of-way, and this ties in with item number four about no retaining walls being constructed as, or part of the development located in the township right-of-way. So we did another look at this, just because this is a heavy graded site, we do need retaining walls. And with the 50-foot wide right-of-way of the township road, it was basically impossible to not get the wall in the right-of-way. So what I'm proposing that, it makes sense to me. So we start out with a 50-foot right-of-way until you get to the first set of retaining walls on the right-hand side, they're just below where the, the main entrance is. And from that point on, we're proposing that it gets necked down to a 33-foot right-of-way, and it just carries the whole way out to that way. It's variable, it's a variable right-of-way, but it only has two changes, because it didn't make sense to go from 50 to a 30, you know, back to a 50, just from, just plotting the boundaries from that stance. In addition to the 33-foot right-of-way, took a look at it, and there was still a little bit of retaining wall from that northern, the two tiers. So I took the entire development and shifted it down to the south about four feet. So now, all the proposed retaining walls are outside of the right-of-way, but again, the only way this can happen is if we have a 33-foot right-of-way. So we were going to request an amendment to Seth's recommendation, instead of being 50-foot right-of-way, being a variable right-of-way for the township road.
So are those darker lines on the curves, that's retaining walls there?
Yes, two tiers.
And how high are those walls?
They're anywhere from four feet to six feet, and in two areas, which we're going to handle this with a modification request next, in the top part here, because we are cutting off that top of the mountain up there, those ones are, I believe those are 10-foot each, but they're only 10-foot for, I don't know the exact distance, but it's basically from this section to this section. It's a short distance, and it tapers back down quickly once you get to the end of the cul-de-sac.
So the topo lines, I can't tell, are they going away from the cul-de-sac or getting coming down to it?
Right here, they are coming down to it. We're still cutting this hill. The existing grade, though, it does go back down here. There is a little bit of a valley that kind of cuts through right here.
So on the retaining wall side?
This would be lower than the adjoining properties.
So that's lower?
Yes.
So it's, there's a hillside there coming up to the cul-de-sac that you're looking on your left if you're building.
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry, you probably answered this. How many beds are we talking here?
122.
And is that?
Roughly 122?
Okay.
And how many parking spaces?
That's what I was going to ask.
Oh, um, 90, 93 proposed right now.
Most of the parking is going to be employee.
Right. I think by township borders, we only need 43, but per, I forget what calculation that you guys, you said you needed about a certain amount. It was more what the township was, but.
Yeah, that's our calculation. It's really a half the space for memory care, and memory care on drive.
Okay, okay.
At max occupancy, how many employees will there be in the facility?
My name is Wynn Bishop. I'm Senior Vice President for Smith Packet. It varies because we, we do use, or Harmony, who is our sister company, uses full-time equivalent sometimes, but typically on the busiest shift, which is the 7:00 AM shift, it's usually about between 20 and 25. And that's the, that's the kitchen. We have a full-time, a full-blown kitchen, that's kitchen staff, the housekeeping managers, sales office managers, et cetera. It's typically around, around 25 at any one time.
That includes like the nursing staff here as well? 25 is the top?
It's usually about, it's usually, well, I'm saying generally, that's not the tie, it's not the maximum. That's, that's, that's kind of the average of what we have, is typically the shifts are 25. I guess at some time, they could go up to as many as 30 or so. Typically Harmony runs about 25 in their shift.
Seems, yeah.
And that's a three-shift setup, right? I mean, that's what you're doing. Yes, three shifts. And obviously, the, that's the busiest shift is the first shift, and they're less than that in the later shift.
So if it's 122 beds, is that, is that 61 rooms, or are there some that are single occupancy and some that are double?
Most of the rooms are single.
Most are single?
They are, and we haven't done that complete mix. We have an analyst that they do all, all of this for us, and they haven't established the exact mix yet, but the majority of them are single, are singles.
And is it one of those scenarios where the top floor is your memory unit and would be more your, your lockdown unit and then?
No, you're, all the memory care is going to be on the ground floor.
They're going to be on the ground.
We don't have memory care above the ground floor.
Okay.
So you're, I believe on this one, is it right, is it the left side that's memory care?
It's the left side.
The left side, first floor is memory care, then there's some on the right.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
Gotcha.
And then to the right of the entrance will be assisted living, then everything on the second and third floor will be assisted living.
Okay.
No memory care above the first floor.
Okay, okay. So Seth, would the, would the special exception vote apply to the entire 16 acres or just to this eight right now?
Just to the eight acres, as proposed as part of this project, yep.
Okay, so if something wants to be done again down the line, they want to come back with something else, they have to come back again?
Their sales agreement only states just around eight acres, so this amount of property is the only thing that they're eligible to apply for as part of the special exception.
Okay, all right. I know you talked about variances that, is it a variance or a modification that's going to be needed?
It would be a modification here for these retaining walls.
Okay.
Retaining wall heights on properties other than single-family residential is through the grading ordinance.
Okay.
It's a modification from county.
That's a modification, okay. Do you anticipate any, any variances being needed? If the special exception is granted, would you then also need any variances that you know of?
Not that I know of, no. We took a pretty long look at this, and it looks like it's just going to be a special exception, with the, the exception of the modifications through the land ordinance for the, for the retaining wall.
For the retaining wall. Any other modifications other than the retaining wall that you know of right now?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
Seth, what about the, his idea about 50 going to 33 and back again, or 33?
Yeah, that's something I'm going to have to review with township administration. I don't necessarily think it's the worst idea in the world. It's something we were bouncing back and forth as, how can we maybe make this work and keep those walls out of the right-of-way? 33 feet is the minimum, the bare minimum right-of-way typically you can work with. I just need to have some internal conversations and see what our thoughts are on that. I'm not going to change necessarily my recommendation right now, but before Tuesday night, certainly my recommendation could change.
Seth, if we'd look at the.
For my opinion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
If we look here, what is, what is it at 231 and 235? What is that building right here? What is that? Is that a house?
That's a house.
Okay, so that's somebody's home?
There is a residential structure between the fire department and the proposed entrance here.
Okay, that's what I thought. And so how close, the way it's currently set right now, how close would there be any development to that house right there?
The road itself, probably 100 feet.
100 feet?
Yeah.
That's close. Well, it's close to somebody who's, yeah.
We did position the road as far as we could on this corner and still be able to make grade going up here, so this would be the residential house, I think you're talking about here. So we have the road located pretty much as far to the west as we could to get away from there.
When you say it's as, as far away as it could be, I just need to, I'm not an engineer, so I don't understand. I need to understand, so there's a lot of frontage here. Is there a reason why the road has to be within 100 feet?
This piece of property right here is not part of the project, sorry. This big chunk right here is not part of the project.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they are a very narrow piece of property down on East McMurray.
I probably should have mentioned that at first.
My, okay. Good, I'm glad it wasn't something I should have known. I'm sorry, say that again, Seth? That's a narrow right there?
To accommodate this grade change, it's a pretty narrow piece of property to do that serpentine, and I want to correct myself, Rochelle, it's actually 80 feet.
80?
About 80. Now, that back left corner of that house, it's pretty close to their side lot line, you know.
And they're going to have all those cars coming back and forth within 80 feet of their house?
I don't want to say all those cars, like this is a hot traffic generator. I mean, this is one of the lowest traffic generating uses out there.
Sure, but I just mean, when you go from having nothing to now 80 feet beside you, you've got cars coming back and forth every day, because you've got workers, you've got, you know, everybody else, is that, I mean, I guess, would that be within the ordinance requirements to be within 80 feet of somebody's property line? I don't like that.
And there will be a little bit of a natural buffer, just with the grade change, because this is being cut down so far, there will be side slopes going uphill back to, back to their grade there, so the road will be down lower than their properties that goes up. So it'll be a little bit of a natural sound buffer.
So they would look down on the road, is what you're saying?
Yes, yes.
Low enough that lights, things like that, wouldn't go into their, their house, or?
We did have a consultant do lighting plan, and it's all LED fixtures. It does have cutoff fixtures installed, so that way there is zero spill over at the lot line, so all the light is directed into the property.
The car lights wouldn't be shining?
Oh, the car lights.
That's what I'm talking about, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry, around the parking lot, we have a perimeter of evergreen shrub, so that way there's a visual barrier all year round.
Yeah, and I guess just right now, I'm just talking about this guy's house that's right here within 80 feet.
Right, so there is, there's a buffer right here that we, you know what, I should probably go to the landscape plan. There we go. So we do have an evergreen in the sideways buffer right here, and this would be the, oh, sorry, this would be the property right here.
When the traffic's coming down the hill, that curve.
Yeah, right here.
And right there, you're going to have a hillside, those.
Yeah, this is about a 20 or 22-foot embankment here.
Okay.
So it's going to be 22 feet lower.
Those topo lines are two feet apart, every one of those lines? Is that two feet of elevation?
Yes, correct, correct.
So Rochelle, to kind of answer your point.
Yeah.
Yeah. So there's a grade line right here off the edge of the road.
Yep.
That sits at the same elevation of this house.
Okay.
Cars coming down the hill are gonna be, their headlights are gonna be smack into a hillside.
Okay.
It's at the same level of that house and then when they make that turn to go back down the hill, they're facing away from the house.
Okay, all right.
I can't say, they're never gonna see any lights on any of these cars, but there's definitely something there to help with that.
Okay. And is it something that down the line, we could put in some sort of like buffering requirement, whatever, to give those, give those people a, some sort of tree line or buffer line or something like that?
You know, it's a pretty steep slope. You gotta be careful about what you're planting on steep slopes like that, especially two-to-ones, but.
Rochelle, the place that they'll see the headlights is when they make that turn at the very top of the driveway. That's when their elevation is gonna be at a point where you might be able to see it, but it'll be far away.
Yeah, we're hundreds, hundreds of feet away at that point.
Okay, okay.
Go Dante.
I have the same question about, if you look up at 308 and 336. I'm just on the same things. If you look up at, I'm just giving the numbers that are right there. How close are we to?
Can you just make sure I'm getting the same?
Yep, yep, yep.
You're talking 308?
Where there's those two houses or like a house and a garage or something at 308?
Yeah.
And then if you look over at 336, I guess?
Oh, 336 is well, way far away from this.
Way far away?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Just for a rough idea, I mean, we're cutting that.
82, 78.
Rochelle, I do.
Yeah.
That's about where the lot line would be.
Okay.
So the development's somewhere around 314 is gonna be down.
Down here, right.
But to answer your question about 308?
Yeah, 308.
80 to 100, it's hard to tell on this site plan where exactly the garage is or some wooded area in there.
Okay.
About the same measurement.
From the property line or from where there'll be any, like actual buildings or?
Took the preference.
Okay.
And again, there's retaining walls there that are above that elevation of that house.
Okay.
So hopefully it'll help with that.
Okay. So then, in reading this, it looks to me like there's a lot going on around here. Some of it's mixed use, some of it's commercial, some, and then there's an area that says it's low-density residential. Can you tell, can you show me where it's low-density residential around this?
We have low-density residential properties effectively all along the northern side of this development. So everything along McNary, Crest, Marion, everything in this vicinity.
So like everywhere from like 310 to like 336?
Everything up north, pretty much for the most part.
That's all low, low-density residential?
Yep.
Okay.
Only when you get right towards the intersection of McNary?
Right.
And East McMurray, do we transition to a mixed-use and commercial zone.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yep, yep, and then, so if this wasn't coming in for a special exception, right, I understand it's a mixed, it's currently mixed residential?
Yes.
So what would have, what would be the, if somebody wanted to come in and put in a whole bunch of houses here, what would be?
Townhouses, single-family homes, patio homes, those are all potential development options under the overlay.
Okay, and what's the density there?
It is six dwelling units an acre.
Six dwelling units an acre. So 48 for, 48 is the max for?
For this section, but, you know, if someone were to look at this as a blank slate, they'd probably take all the property around there and look at that for potential development.
Sure, sure, sure. As I said, you're saying like if we would go with the one, if you go with the full 16 acres?
Even more so than that, 'cause there's other property under the same ownership. But if you were looking at the 16 acres, then you're looking?
You're gonna, 100 and some houses?
Yeah, 96 homes.
96 homes, okay. At like, and what would those be? Is that like half acre or is that, oh, because it's?
To get to that level of density, there's no way you're gonna do it on half.
No, I misspoke there. We're talking either?
Quarter acre.
Quarter acre, okay.
Or townhouses, that's how you, that's how you'd really have to achieve that density to be through a single-family attached townhouse.
Okay, okay. So the other options here are, if this were gonna be developed, is we're talking townhomes, we're talking patio homes, or we're talking single-family that?
The other end of the spectrum is the underlying zoning is low-density residential. In theory, could be a half-acre development in here.
Right. So it's current, it's mixed residential, but it's?
It's a mixed residential overlay.
Yep.
But under that is low-density residential.
Right.
So you have the option.
You have the option, right, right, right. But if we're looking at developers and buying it and if it looks like this is a pretty big topography issue, if you're gonna, if somebody's gonna buy this and spend the money?
To spend the money?
To develop it?
To knock off the top of the hillside for half-acre lots, probably doesn't.
And to put services back there, right? Okay. Is there a, is there a, like an open, like an outdoor area, things like that, that you anticipate then?
There's several outdoor areas. I know roughly where they are, but I don't know exactly what the uses would be, so I'll turn to Wynd's.
So we always have two patio areas. One would be in the back, kinda where that orange is. I wonder if you have your pointer there. So the orange to the right would be assisted living, outdoor area where they, we have a grilling and that kinda thing and just an area for them to go in and out of. And that connects into the dining area, so there's a French door that's often open, so they can come and go. And then on the backside, there's a smaller memory care garden right in there. It's, that's a fenced area. It has to be eight-feet fenced and it has to be locked at all times, et cetera. That's the memory care garden, so they can go, have plenty of room to go out and walk and get back.
How big is that area? Would you say?
I don't, I don't know this.
Generally?
I don't know. It's pretty big. I mean, normally it's a walking path, 'cause they like to walk on a circular motion, so it's kind of a circular path.
Right.
And it often, it often goes out of the dining room and comes back in to another common area so they can get, so they can, you know, still go circular. But I, Dante, you may know kinda all on the scale, but it's, it's pretty decent size, but you want it manageable, so.
Okay. And then that area that's beyond the parking, that there's nothing, that's, you know, it's south of there or below the cul-de-sac, would that just be a grassy area? Would that be?
Correct.
Okay.
Undisturbed.
All right. Seth, for the, if our, if the way they calculated our parking requirements puts it at 43, do we have like a maximum though? Are they, are they, I'm just, are they allowed to go over twice the amount of parking?
I need to look at that as part of our site plan approval and if they need to be limited on that, I think they're probably not gonna wanna try to seek a variance just to put more parking than the ordinance allows for them.
Yeah.
But we do have restrictions on how far beyond.
It just seems like, just, and I'm not questioning what you think you need or anything like that, but that just seems like normally that over double would not be something that the ordinance would allow, right?
I'll review that with them.
Okay.
I have a question about the retaining walls at the top of the serpentine there. Could you not move the building back a little bit further to allow yourself a better grading so that those retaining walls right off that, right off that curve would not be needed? You know what I mean? Like if you push the building diagonally up and to the right, yeah.
We looked at it initially, where it helps?
Change the shape a little bit.
Well, we took, we took this footprint and we moved it just to see what other options we had and where it would help somewhere else, it hurt on the other side.
Excuse me, just not engineering. Where it hurts is that, you know, we really need that memory care wing to be on the ground floor. So if you slide it this way, then you bump into that road that goes into the main entrance. Do you have your pointer? So, see this road here that goes to the corner of Che here? If you slide this building down, you're getting into that road such that it makes the turn, you know, almost impossible to make. So if that building comes down, we really? Well, no, I'm saying push it up and to the right.
Up here.
Yeah, go that way. Such a steep slope. So that is steep there. And then when you, I mean, when we had it as a private road, you know, we didn't have that, the cul-de-sac is a, so we did that to really accommodate what the township wanted. Wasn't our preference, but having that cul, we asked the town about just deadening that road, but having the cul-de-sac, you can see how the grades are. It just, you know, that's a lot of grading work just for that cul-de-sac. So I don't see how, you know, better, I don't think we could push it up anymore.
I can, I can verify that adding the cul-de-sac added between 8,000 and 10,000 cubic yards of excavation necessary.
And this may be a dumb question, but maybe I should know the answer too, but why is the area to the left not part of this? You guys don't own that?
This one right here?
That, where I, where I was showing the big frontage and it's the blue, it's 217?
Totally, totally separate ownership?
Totally separate ownership.
Part of the equation.
Okay, okay. I was just confused 'cause it was in the blue.
I can tell you a little history about ownership if you're just curious.
No, 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 I'm okay. I just, I didn't understand, I didn't see it as a separate portion where the, I just didn't see it separate from this, 'cause it was all in blue. So I just, I thought it was, I thought it was part of the whole thing.
It was originally all part of a farm, someone named Esther Baird.
Okay.
And then sheep. Okay, I'm staying with the.
No, 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 thank you, sorry.
Let me just pivot just for a second. Is there any other audience comments? Anybody wanna add anything? You can come up now. All right, continue.
I mean, just as far as?
I think I could pretty much finish though, who's gonna ask for questions?
I think that my, you know, my, my only concerns about this, that I know that that area is narrow, it just seems we've got eight acres of property and we're gonna, you know, stick a road within 80 feet of this guy's house. It's not, you know, it's not an already, it's not an approved thing that's there, where the request is for a special exception. I mean, I guess what you're saying is 'cause of the serpentine nature of the road, you don't have many choices there.
Right, and with how narrow?
No, that is.
Part of the properties, you're compared to the rest of it.
Yeah. I just put out there, I don't like that. I just think it's just a very large piece of property. It's a special exception. This guy have had nothing.
I think no matter which way you get there, even if it was a residential development, the maximum slope is gonna be 12%.
Yeah.
That's where you're at. You're not gonna be, and then you'd be asking for a variance for greater than 12%, which I would not recommend.
Yeah.
And, you know, and you have other serious.
Yeah, no, no, I know, I just, it's.
I think regardless of the type of development that would come in here, I think you'd be looking at a real similar entrance.
Yeah, no, I, that's why I asked what else was gonna come in here.
You're not gonna avoid that.
Yeah. And then my other thing is just the, I get what you're saying about the low amount of traffic and things like that. So just that amount of parking on, for, for that use would be the other thing that I guess I'm not, I don't love. Just more pavement than maybe what's necessary.
I don't disagree with you at all Rochelle and we're gonna take a closer look.
Okay.
You know, if they get their special exception approval as part of our site plan approval.
Right, right, right.
And they're in charge of maintaining the road. It's a private road.
Public, no, no. It would be ultimately dedicated to the township.
Seth, you may, this is Wynd again. You may be reading the supplemental regulation that talks about gee, the road being, being private, so.
Yeah.
But that's, this is, that's being changed here if it's public.
Yeah, in some situations, this is, I don't believe this is always a special exception use, so that would apply as part of a supplemental regulation. With this being a special exception, we think it's prudent to have it be a public road. So we're diverting from that as part of our recommendation for the special exception.
Okay.
The only thing is the applicant that we would add to it is, to make the site work, we really need to do that variable width that we talked about from 50 to 33. We talked to Seth about options and the township didn't wanna maintain the wall. We understand that in the right-of-way. We've, we ask if we could maintain the wall in the right-of-way, I can understand why that doesn't work for liability and whatever reasons. So the, to us, the best option is just to make the right-of-way width narrower, have the walls outside of that right-of-way. So the walls would not be in the right-of-way. Is that, so we really kinda needed to go to 50 to 33 to make, to make it work with the walls. So the car path would remain, what, 24 feet, 25?
Car path's not changing.
Yeah.
24-foot car path.
So talking about that.
Including. 10-foot dry aisle, 2-foot wedge curves.
So then what happens, you know, for maintenance of the road over time and, you know, having to?
That's the conversation that we need to have internally is to, if that 33 gives us the right-of-way, we would need to maintain that road.
'Cause you're gonna have infrastructure next to that, you know, right, and so on.
We're gonna have to talk about that. I just, this is the first time I've seen this, so I just need some time to.
Yeah, I only give you 40 on either side.
Well, there'll be street lamps up that road?
They are.
We do have some, yeah.
And those are on, on their property, outside of the right-of-way.
Okay. The mechanics of this Seth, so the special exception criteria, I mean, reading through those, all this, all those 10 seem to be okay.
Yeah.
And then you're gonna make the supplemental regulations, I think it's something like 15, really is part of your eight or six.
Well, my condition 10, it's part of our opinion for approval of the special exceptions as they, you know, comport with all of our additional supplemental regulations. We would do that anyways, but I like to memorialize that as part of any special exception approval.
Okay.
It's not necessarily how you potentially approve a special exception, 'cause a lot It's not necessarily how you potentially approve a special exception, cause a lot of them are things that we would look at through site plan, or that would carry on through the life of the building. But it's important to understand their impact on a development like this.
Okay. Is there any concern about there only being one, one way in and one way out?
Yes, and that's why we're doing a temporary cul-de-sac on the other end of the property to, you know, there's nowhere else to go right now.
Yeah.
We can't force them to buy more property to connect to another road, there's nowhere else to go, so we do a temporary cul-de-sac to facilitate connection down the road.
We have a GMS.
And we have, we're working through the potential of a connection to the fire department.
What is the maximum length of a cul-de-sac?
600 feet, but when they're designated as temporary, that regulation doesn't come into effect.
Say that again.
If they're, if they're.
Since it's.
Temporary cul-de-sac.
They're temporary cul-de-sacs, we can exceed that 600 feet.
So there's only one exit and one, one way in and one way out until they expand?
And if, if that adjacent property were to be developed, then we can accommodate that.
But nothing until then?
But that, but that has to happen, if that, if that additional property does develop.
Yeah.
They can't come in and say, we don't want to connect.
We are going to do everything we can to make that connection happen.
What, does that mean everything we can?
All of our approval processes will include a connection to this temporary cul-de-sac. It is a public right of way at that point, it will, it will be connected.
If somebody would ever.
If somebody were to develop that adjacent property.
But if nobody ever does, it'll stay as a temporary cul-de-sac.
Right.
How long can something stay as a temporary cul-de-sac?
I do not believe there's any, you know, expiration date on that.
Okay, so it can be 20, 30 years?
It could be, and that, there are some in the township that have existed like that for that long.
Okay. Are there, is that, are there any sidewalks?
Just around the building, none going down. I'm sorry, what's that?
Is that the orange?
Yeah, correct, correct.
Now, do you anticipate that any of the people who would live here would be capable, interested in walking out the road and walking down the street? Or is that not, that not the audience that you're, the clientele that you expect?
So the average age of our, average age of our residents, even when we have an independent living component, is about 85 years old.
Okay.
So our youngest population unfortunately is memory care and they're not allowed, obviously, to wander. So it would be, you know, you might have some very healthy folks that the nurses may walk down the road. That, we, we kind of like that circular motion of the sidewalk, but I don't really see any of our residents walking down that, down that road.
I mean, you'll have family members visiting.
And they'll walk.
They'll drive up.
Right, and they may walk around some, but typically they come to visit and, and leave. So the, you know, the assisted living, you need assistance of daily care, whether it's medication or bathing, or, I mean, there, there, there are medicinal reasons why they're in the assisted living.
There's no independent.
No independent.
Living here, okay.
None.
Okay. Would this be similar to Paramore?
Bingo.
So there's no sidewalks that go down to McMurray?
Correct, there's no sidewalks.
And not required?
I'm okay, yeah, we're okay with that.
Yeah, and I just want to confirm.
Yeah.
And it would be, would it not be required, because once it's a special exception, we can kind of do what we want, or it's not required because it's deemed to be a driveway?
It's not required.
Just, just my opinion on that, cause we've done a lot of these facilities that, we, we think everybody's better off not to have the sidewalk, because it could encourage more if you had a sidewalk. You're probably better off without it honestly, and we are too.
Rochelle, anything else?
No.
Ted. Having, I'm wiped out.
So this is a.
It's a big thing to consider in one, I mean, it's a big thing to consider in one meeting.
Seth always says the best for last. We're just.
Do you want to be exhausted at the end?
We're just making a recommendation.
Yeah. It's only a recommendation.
Right.
For a special exception use approval, so you're not approving a site plan tonight.
Right. When's the zoning?
April 18th, Tuesday night.
You ready for a beat of the zoning?
Yeah, it's a Tuesday? Yeah.
It's a whole different animal.
Can I hear, can I hear an action motion on this item? I'll make a motion. We're, we're approving.
Recommendation.
I'll make a motion to make a recommendation for the 1022-2023 Cannonsburg AL special exception application. According, as outlined in staff's memo dated April 5th, 2023. Be approved to include all of the requirements, criteria, and recommendations outlined in staff's memo. Be approved. We have a motion, do we, do I hear a second? Motion made in second, can I, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Good luck, guys.
Thanks.
We'll see you again.
Can I ask one quick question?
Yes.
So since this is just a recommendation to go to Z and B on Tuesday, we don't have to worry about finalizing that variable width right away until Tuesday's meeting?
Tuesday night would be opportunity to finalize the language of that condition.
Okay.
That's why I need some time to review this internally and see if we're comfortable changing that condition in our opinion.
Okay.
Cause we're, we're not gonna be able to like move ahead.
I hear you, yeah, no, I understand, I understand, you just gotta give me an opportunity to.
No, but you're, but you're saying, well, no, we'll, we'll talk about that before Tuesday.
We might have a conversation tomorrow, if not Monday.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Thanks for talking.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anything that the commission or department wants to talk about? Hey, guys, men, gentlemen, we're still meeting.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I don't think they showed this as part of their presentation, but there are some perspectives of that proposed.
Yeah, they did as well.
But to answer your question Conrad, you'll definitely be able to see this from East McMurray. You'd be able to see anything up there, because there's 60 feet of grade change from East McMurray upside. If you put a house up there, you're gonna see it. Brought to the planning portion, all of you have met new assistant planning director, Jim Sutter. Ed's last day was last Tuesday, and he worked a half day and then he was out of here.
He actually came in.
Okay Conrad, give him some credit. He came in for a half day, he did his rounds and, and he was out of here. He was honored at the council meeting on the 27th.
That's great.
It's been a weird feeling, but things are going well so far. No one has talked to him, and I think that's the way he wants it. I'm just gonna avoid him, unless I really, really need him. We do have the zoning hearing board meeting Tuesday night for the special exception. We have that public hearing on the 24th for the ordinance amendments.
Is that gonna be here?
Everything's here, yep.
The public hearing?
Yes, it's part of, it's before the regular council meeting on the 24th.
Are we, are we, do we have to be there, we have to be there, expect to be there?
No.
Okay.
Would you like us to be?
Can be if you want, but it's, we're not expecting you to be here. You know, we'll, we'll, we'll have a decision letter from the planning commission in the docket folder for council to review as part of their public hearing. That's before the regularly scheduled council meeting, immediately after, they may or may not take action on that. I would expect that they probably will, but who knows? June 5th, looking further out, we have our public hearing for the conservation residential overlay map amendment. Jim and I have been starting the process of notifications. We have about 115 different parcels that we need to notify in writing, we have to go out and do postings, but we're gearing up for that. We should have, that'll be on the May agenda for planning commission for a recommendation.
Are we using the social media outlets to notify? Like those.
We don't have.
Couple ladies who came and spoke.
Right, we don't have a planning department Facebook page, we are utilizing our website, we have.
We don't?
Planning department does not offer.
Really? Nothing?
No, I have enough on my plate already to have a, maybe I need a social media coordinator, Jim.
Oh, that, that, yeah, that should, that should happen.
I hear you Rochelle, with, as the words are coming out of my mouth, I recognize that.
Yeah.
In today's day and age.
It really.
It may be of some serious value.
Especially with.
We are using our website, it's in the observer reporter, like I said, we're getting the mailings out, posting the properties, everything we're required to do under the municipality's planning code before that.
I mean, and it's certainly just one of those things that as well, is that it solves another problem, is if you've got it on social media, we have a Facebook page, things like that, then, then the information is out there, rather than here, than reading it on PT Buzz every day.
I'll tell you this though, the, the day that was pending ordinance, it was basically on social media.
I'm sure it was, but if the information was right there, rather than reading it only on PT Buzz every day, you know, it, you would at least be.
I can't avoid that.
But, but there's something to reference though.
CR stuff, having those changes.
It's about 115-ish parcels to be lifted out of the overlay.
Yeah, I mean, that, that would be a good, that would get, like for the workshops and when we do the next workshop thing, I mean, that's why we didn't have people coming in and commenting. I think it was just, you know, just lack of distribution of that information.
Yeah.
People are not reading, you know, the official stuff as, as much as.
I think it would give you a little more balance as well, as you wouldn't just be getting people who are on one side of it, because then everybody, you know, and then there'd be no argument that there's, that it's not out there and people can't know.
All valid points.
The fire department has it at this point.
You'd like to, but you can't.
I'd love to.
Yep.
Okay.
Move it up on your list. At least put it on your list.
Anything else, Jim, Seth? In adjourned.